Marla, would you call the row please?
Your name is...
Here.
Vice Mayor Stanger.
Here.
Councilmember Durst.
Here.
Estenosa.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Smith. What else?
Here.
Alright, looks like we got most everybody here. Just like to announce that Linda Smith isn't here tonight, she had a death in the family, so all of our prayers are with her. And we'll move on down to citizens' participation. And the first item we have here is Scott is going to bring up a group for us.
Honorable Mayor and Council, it's my pleasure to introduce a very small part of the Rollins Baseball Association. These folks are probably some of the biggest unsung heroes and volunteers that we have in the city. Quite frankly, if it wasn't for these dedicated men and women that go down there and prep the ball fields and make sure everything's ready for the baseball season, I don't know that we'd have the baseball season or even have baseball in Rollins anymore. All these folks, I don't know how many hours they put in. I was down there a few times this summer, and there was always somebody down there working. We're trying to renew the partnership with the City of Rollins and this fine organization. I think we've made some good strides. At the beginning of this summer, we still have a lot of work to do in the fall, as there are going to be a big state baseball tournament coming up and bringing a lot of people to our community, so it just, it's one of those things, it's without these folks, we could not take care of those facilities and offer the fine programs that we do. If you would indulge them for just a few minutes, I'd like to turn the mic over to them if they would have anything to say to you.
Okay. I'd like to thank you guys for the invite and the recognition. We're kind of a small group, and we've been out there on an island by ourselves for a long time, so I appreciate you guys' time. As Scott said, we have, we're scheduled, we were scheduled to do the district tournament for Little League. I don't know how much you guys know about Little League, but we were scheduled to do the district tournament next year, but because of some things that are happening at the Sinclair Refinery, we found that possibly there'd be some housing issues with the teams. So we put it back to 2021, right? So, and in 2021, we also had the pleasure of hosting the state Little League tournament also. So what that kind of, just to kind of give you guys an idea of what's going to come into the community with that, with that event is, there's eight teams in the district, in District Two, that'll come into our community. Thirteen players per team. Probably, parents are going to come with them also, so we're going to have to, they're going to have to find housing and eat. And then also, the state tournament has, I believe, four, might be six, teams that show up later in the, and later in the year also. So that's kind of the influx that we're going to have of kids, and, you know, there, I, at a later date, if I'm asked, I can give you guys some actual figures on what we spend to send our kids off to tournaments, and to give you an idea of kind of what we're looking at coming into the community. But, the other part is, is, you know, Ray McPhil isn't here tonight, he works, he's moved up to the Legion Fields. I took presidency of the Little League after Ray worked on those fields. And there's been a lot of times we've been down there late at night, you know, seeding the fields, managing the dirt. We have rec grants, we go to the rec board and we ask for rec grants. The past two years, we've gone and asked for, this year we have backstops for all four fields down there, that we've asked money for, and we've been granted those monies. We've also asked the rec board for dugouts, new dugouts. And that's really the kind of the condition of the VFW fields. I can't speak to the sports complex too well. My son does play up there, but Ray could speak more to that side of the baseball community. You know, we really need your guys' help. If you guys can find some way to muster labor, whatever you guys can come up with, to help us out, don't we? That would be great.
I just, I think, have you ever thought of, maybe when you send a letter out to these teams that they wanted to, they, maybe we do like they do at the fairgrounds, where they put all these kids are staying in these campers? That'd be an easy way to get why I have to pay for a room and stuff.
Absolutely, sir. So, the baseball community has been renowned for housing teams, where we take, we have people that sponsor teams, and when they come to the communities, they can stay with those teams. So those are opportunities too, and that, and Little League used to do that. There's a little bit of some questionable, like, do they pass background checks so that the kids are safe, right? Because that's what Little League is all about, is safety for the kids. And so, there's some of those things that happen in that, in that situation, but yeah, baseball's renowned for housing kids. I know that, for us, one time, we actually went and rented a house, an R&amp;B, and we stayed at, the team stayed at an R&amp;B house, which was cheaper than a hotel, and we had the kitchenette there so that we could cook for the kids and everything, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just thought I'd throw that out.
No, absolutely, it's a great opportunity.
To all those kids out there during the fair, and they seem to be having a pretty good time out there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Places to sleep, and, yeah.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a huge, you know, Rollins Little League is starting to get on the map. We used to go to these tournaments, and we didn't have great success, so on the competitive side, we're starting to get more competitive. This year, we completed all three games that we, that we competed in. We didn't get ten run rule, so we have some really good things, we have really great volunteers that are invested in these kids and the community, and, and so, yeah, we're doing great things down there. I know we haven't been very visible in the past years, but I just, I, this is an opportunity to make ourselves visible to you guys.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, I just, like I said, I thank you guys for putting in that hard work and, you know, helping us, and hopefully here in the future, that as things move on, that we can get some more people down there and help out as well, a little bit more.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Excuse me. Can you introduce your...
Oh yes, I'm sorry. This is Yolanda, who I know is actually my sister, but is one of our volunteers we have this year. She helped prep fields. She actually went and prepped our fields as a high schooler. Her and Blaine McPhil prepped our fields, and as you know, it's the early...
You got my name?
Oh, you're Rebecca, I'm sorry. It's my other sister. That's my other sister. Ethan Combs, he's my vice president with the league. He's also a parent, a volunteer for teams, one of our coaches. He's one of our top coaches. But I want to recognize Rebecca and Blaine McPhil. Blaine's not here today, but they both, as high schoolers, came down after school every day and prepped the fields and made sure they were ready to go. And I don't know if you guys remember how our spring was this year, but it was very wet, right? So these guys were down there, blading the fields, trying to make sure they were dry enough and safe, and had safe conditions. We canceled three games this year, out of twelve, with the conditions, the field, that we had, so we did really well this year, and that, and that's something that they did, so.
Good job, guys. Thank you.
What's your name?
Rebecca.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Marla.
I, I do have, oh, are they done, we're done with these?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I wanted to bring up, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring the Latino Fest this weekend. It was around 250 people there. Thank you. Okay, now, now, go ahead. I want to take this time to thank the Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring the Latino Fest this, this weekend. We ended up with around 250 people. I walked around and tried to figure out, a lot of people from out of town that, that lived in Rollins years ago that came down and visited, but I think it was a success. I think they, Chamber needs to work a little bit more in the planning portion of it, but other than that, I think they did a real, real good job with the people that they had, so.
And congratulations to Louis's wife, Roy, and cream chili.
That's my good choice.
Troy?
As a mayor and council, I just wanted to update you on the new school resource officer. We're four days into it. It's been a very huge success so far. Elementary school, middle school, and high school gave him standing motivation when he was introduced. He's actually starting to really get involved with co-op high school. The kids are starting to come to him with, with questions and concerns, so that's a good step forward, and I just wanted to thank you as the council for signing an MOU, so we have this partnership, Public Finance School, number one.
Good, it sounds like it's going to be Troy, thank you. Okay, now if there's anybody from the public that would like to take up to five minutes to bring something to our attention, go ahead, Joe. How are you?
Hello, well, slow, but steady.
That's alright.
My name is Cheryl Bailey. I have appeared before you before, and I'll bet several of you even know what I'm here to comment on tonight. I have copies for each of you that I will present to Cheryl or Marla, but I would prefer you listen to what I have to say and get my full meaning, please. First, I'd like to compliment councilperson Martinez for trying to get a proposal passed to resolve the street parking issue, and to councilperson Wells for calling for a committee to address the problem of recreational vehicles cluttering neighborhood streets, often creating safety issues for emergency vehicles. Mr. Hammond might even remember an issue before the city planning zoning board, of which I was a member, a number of years ago, when mobile home parks wanted to put larger units in a crowded park, which could have blocked emergency vehicles. A city's responsibility should look out for the safety of all residents, not just during the winter, but all year round. As I mentioned in the previous presentation, Rollins looks like a transient town. We need to improve the image and believe with, by having an ordinance limiting, actually eliminating recreational vehicles from the streets. Besides creating a safer environment for pedestrians, that can make Rollins permanently friendlier looking. I recently spoke with a friend in Minnesota who asked me what was my latest campaign. He knows me well. Speaking of the parking issue, he was aghast. In his Moose Lake community, there are no recreational vehicles, including boats and snowmobiles, of which Moose Lake has many, parked on streets, and lord knows, there are many that could be if the city allowed it. People are responsible for storing their own toys when not in use seasonally, he stated, and that's what I believe too. Looking around Rollins streets, there are some recreational vehicles that have been stationary for months, even years at a time. Albeit, there is no one living in them because that's against an ordinance, however, they are an eyesore and difficult at times to maneuver around, especially in the winter with unplowed streets because a plow couldn't manage to push snow back to the curbs. Previously, I wrote a letter to the editor about watching a street sweeper moving around parked cars, never able to clear to the curb. Why are we sending out the machine and driver if they cannot accomplish their task? What I'm saying next is facetious, and you may laugh, but how about putting up parking meters beside long-term parked trailers? Maybe the suggestion of paying for their part of the street they occupy might encourage them to find a suitable location for their toys. Or better yet, let this newly formed subcommittee propose an ordinance that will free our streets and again make them a thorough fair, not a parking lot, as councilperson Sanger once indicated the definition of a street was. Perhaps the city can rent out spaces on some of its property for long-term housing of recreational vehicles that shouldn't be being stored on the city streets. That includes, by the way, a trailer on Seventh Street loaded with snowmobiles, and now an additional trailer with off-road vehicles that has been there for months and never moved. A friend of the owner told me that the snowmobiles are all broken, so the owner should dispose of them or find a place to store them, repair them, or sell them, not leave it to the city to take care of them and for us to drive around them. Councilperson Martinez stated in Rollins Times article, "They've got to have some respect for their neighbors and understand that the street doesn't belong to them and their toys." Enough said on that subject. The other issue that brings me here is vehicles parking too close to the intersections, making turning visibility next to impossible. I've stuck my car's nose out far enough to see at several intersections, specifically Second and Buffalo, and Eleventh Street and High Street, and nearly been hit on several occasions. It is not my duty or right as a citizen to ask the owners of cars parked too close to an intersection to move their vehicles, but there is an ordinance which states fifteen to twenty feet back from a corner. If I cannot see around them, a police officer driving around the community should be able to see the repeated violations and get the offending vehicle moved back for visibility and safety. I have called the police several times about the offending vehicles on the northeast corner of Buffalo and Second Street, and the dispatcher has sent out an officer, but within 24 hours after correcting or supposedly correcting the situation, the RV, trailers, boats, and trucks are right back. No more warnings, enforcement is all I'm asking for, and it is an existing ordinance. I've done my part as an otherwise happy resident of Rollins, including speaking at a meeting instead of in social media, and applying for the subcommittee on the parking issue, and doing my part to be a respectful neighbor. Creating and enacting an ordinance, a law, a rule, means nothing if it is not enforced. A city's ordinance, law, or rule should be enforceable as it is written and supported by the city council and the city police.
Amen.
As a mandate, in other words, mandatory enforcement, not discretionary.
Yes.
Now, I'm asking the people who represent us to do their part in controlling a situation that is out of hand and totally unacceptable, at least to me and others who have voiced their opinion to me personally, because they're afraid to come before people, I'm not. Also, as Mark Twain said, "You're never wrong to do the right thing." Thank you for your time and listening to my comments, and you do have copies, each of you, that I've given, if you would reread them. I think many of you, in fact, I think almost all of you, I don't think Ms. Wells you were on the board when I spoke the last time, nor Mr. Durst, but I think the others have heard me. I get very upset, I have no rights to remove a trailer that the city does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for letting me have some time here. I come up here, I'm always nervous, so you have to excuse some of my demeanor, a lot of my attitude is, is presented as what it is, but basically, I want to talk about cars and yards, weeds, and the trailers, and, I already forgot the other one. Excuse me for not being prepared again. Basically, let's start off with the cars. Private property, we have privacy fences. At one time, it was good. Now, some people are complaining about people's junk in other people's yard. I don't know what to do. My junk is my junk. I don't feel it's junk. I don't have the, the funds to fix what I have under my circumstances at this time, but it's in private property, and if you don't like it, look the other way. That's the great thing about America, is our freedoms. The weeds. The weeds, I understand the safety and health issue there. Some people have asthma, our family does not. Last year, it was on the radio for, "Don't forget to cut your weeds down," or "Check your neighbor's yards," blah, blah. That's not being in a forest. So what's the purpose of the ordinance if it's not in forest? Look, I'll, I'll respect the law if there, there is one. Right now, as far as my cars, I'm out of, I have three vehicles in the back of my yard, supposedly two are, are allowed, and they're supposed to be covered. I have two covered, one is not. Right now, you guys could go over there and do something about it, but you're not. I feel it's my private property. I think that should be taken off. It's my private, we live in America. As far as the weeds, if it's a health issue, let's do something about it. Send out flyers, advertise on the radio, put it in the newspaper, and then start ticketing. Enforcement. The biggest thing here is, it's, what we have going on is, is a little bit of communism. We have all these laws, and then we overlook some people, and then if, if we want to tag that guy, we could get him for everything, and he could go to jail, or lots of tickets for a long time. So, one of the arguments, last time we were here, was about the trailers, if we enforced the corners, making sure everyone's further back. I, I understand that, I'm okay with that now. I'm not okay with you guys taking my property rights away. I think the safety and health issue is a scam. I really do. I really do. It's taking our freedoms away. We're going into a socialist system, and you guys are helping it. I do not appreciate that. You guys are threatening my rights, is how I feel. So I thank you for your time. I hope you just reexamine when you pledge of your allegiance to the flag, not to communism. Alright, thank you for your time. Thank you, Joe.
I'm Tanya Lumen. Good evening, City Council. I desire to live in a city that is just, merciful, and humble. With this in mind, I do have major concerns about the Rollins Police Department. Our faith in the criminal justice system depends on the knowledge that everyone is playing by the same rules. When officers act above the rules, injustice occurs. My concerns are based on three past incidents, and I hope you will address them as is your duty to the public. The first incident is the murder of unarmed man Randall Beach in 2015 by police officers Jared Frakes and Joey, Joe Ballistieri. Sorry if I mispronounced his name. I realize they were never criminally charged as an investigation conducted by the Utah County... Munta? Again.
Uinta.
Uinta, thank you. County attorney determined the actions to be justified. If they were justified in their actions, why did we settle at a cost of $925,000? Were we afraid to take this to civil court? Was it because they would have been found guilty of using deadly force when they were not in imminent danger? They killed an unarmed man. Why are they still on the police force? Why is there no accountability or transparency for this murder? Why was there no discipline given? And why no additional training? A second incident is the arrest of Rollins Fire Chief Rutherford by Officer Tom Gamblin in 2018. Is there a procedure for bar checks? If not, why isn't there a procedure for bar checks that would include the number of officers? The general amount of time spent and the requirement that all bars must be checked at least once a year. Was this the rest, the case of Mr. Gamblin bullying the hole in the wall? Records show that the department visited the hole in the wall more times than any other bar between 2015 and 2018. I understand if a bar is more popular, and during certain times of the year, especially during turnaround, it should be checked more often, but all bars should be checked at least once. The charges were reduced and the case was settled, but was this a pattern of things to come? The third incident happened recently with Tom Gamblin and a Rollins resident. The citizen complained that off-duty police officer Tom Gamblin was threatening and following her and a minor in their car to her residence. The complaint was taken by Jared Frakes, who told her that no officer would harm her if she was obeying the law. Really? Even after he threatened to do so? This being said by an officer who murdered an unarmed man. Not the one I would trust. Police Chief Troy Palmer stated that the matter was investigated and the allegations have been sustained. had been sustained. The allegation was proven true. But due to some HR statute that disclosure would be contrary to public interest, the results of any disciplinary action are denied to the public. The public deserves to know what disciplinary action, if any, was given. So what option is the public given in a case like this? Should her or me... And every complaint to the police, if every complaint to the police is sustained but the result's hidden, why would anybody complain to the police? If 911 was called and the sheriff's office was asked to investigate, would the results then be given to the public? Is that what we need to do, is call the sheriff's office? Why is the bully, Tom Gamblin, being protected?
Really?
And why hasn't he been made to apologize to the woman and child?
Yeah.
Could you hold on a minute, Tanya? Could you please hold it down in the room, please, and give Tanya the respect of talking? Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Tanya.
The problem is, is the public has little trust in their police. Respect must be earned and not assumed. The Rawlins police practice biased, selective enforcement to bully the public as they enforce, judge, and execute the laws they see fit. This is wrong legally and morally. Since the police was governed by the city manager, the city manager is under the council, I expect the council to work on this problem. You may think you have no power, but you do. You control their budgets, and you can demand explanations. I expect police reform. The reform should include the right-to-work state. I feel Tom Gamblin, Jared Frakes, and Joe Ballastary should be immediately let go. Or the council could cut three officers' pay out of the budget and put it toward training good officers that we have on the force. They are not let go, and explanation should be given to the public as to why, and a plan to rebuild trust in these specific officers should be given. Number two, all officers should be assessed for aggression, substance use, and mental health stability. Random drug trust, a hair follicle, should be given to all active police. Number three, all officers should have anger management, de-escalation, and systematic bias training. Number four, all officers should have access to mental health counseling to deal with any PTSD or anxiety issues. There are many officers in our state and in our nation who are subject to suicide. I don't want that to happen here. Number five, police and council should increase transparency in regard to any problematic, coercive, or aggressive actions towards civilians. Number six, increase of positive interactions between the public and the police. I feel the picnic that they had at South Park this month was a great example of that, as well as, as Mr. Palmer just explained, this police officer for the schools. I think that is also a great path forward. Number seven, a change in police culture from bully to servant. Perhaps a lesson from the best buddies program at the school from the teenagers. That best buddies program has won awards statewide as far as how not to be a bully. Number eight, if the council's not ready to tackle this problem, perhaps Rawlins is in need of proper policing community organization, such as the one in Albany County, to identify policing problems and the goal of reforms. And I have for you their website, and you can look at what they are doing with the help of the ACLU. I want a town that is as safe for the police as it is for its citizens. I want a town where the police are seen as public servants who help, not bullies who threaten or hurt. Council, you have a great opportunity to change this culture and to make a difference. We can't change state or national politics, but we can make a difference in our town right here. Please address these concerns before the next angry police response leads to the death of a Rawlins citizen you may know or love. Be the council that does justly, loves mercy, and performs humbly. And I have information for you as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a reminder, we'd like to try to keep it as close to five minutes as possible. I've let the last two go over, but please, let's try to keep it as close to five as possible. Anybody else? That's Pat.
I won't go up there, but I'll talk to him right here, if I might. The Honorable Mayor and members of council, there's a couple of issues here, but I think it's of great importance that you, as the council, take heed. You know, you've got a lot of upset members of this community for a number of reasons. I'll be the first to admit, I write a lot of articles about some of the stuff that goes on within the city. I was a city employee. I know exactly how the inner workings play. I know how the whole process happens. When I tell you as a citizen and as a resident of this community for years, something has to be done. And I say this because I grew up here, and I know what this community is like. I guess the only question I would ask is, where did we go wrong? You know, Willis and I were on vacation two weeks ago. We were in Whitefish, Montana. Whitefish is about, it's a little bit smaller of a community than Rawlins. And we were just driving around the neighborhood. It's a beautiful community. And I looked at Rose, and I said, "Do you notice anything about these streets?" She goes, "Oh, they're narrow, just like ours." I laughed, I said, "No, take a look. There isn't one recreational vehicle, trailer, camper, boat, motorcycle trailer, snowmobile trailer parked on these streets." Now, if you know anything about Whitefish, Montana, they have a ski resort, they're right near Glacier National Park, so you've got hunting, camping, fishing, boating, everything we have, but not one of those tractors, vehicles, campers was on that street. And those streets are narrow, just like ours. But I thought it was interesting that they didn't have that. What I would advise this council is really look at other communities to see what they do. We have a slew of ordinances that are not being enforced. That much we do know. Just on 13th Street, I can tell you, I have in my phone about forty photographs of numerous ordinances that are being violated on a regular basis. I could really be a pain in your side by commenting about it, writing about it, and you know what? I'm done with that. Because nothing gets done.
Nothing.
And that is a problem. You're elected officials. You represent me, all these people here. And if you aren't doing that, you're not servicing this community. I can tell you, there are upset people. Most people don't want to come here because they're angry. And I guarantee you, you don't want that mentality, but you have to do something. That's what you get paid to do.
That's right.
It's just a very simple, simple, basic thing. Some of you have been on this council for forty years. Things have to change.
Have to change.
I could go on and on, but I'm not going to, but I'm just telling you, you've got to find solutions. You've got to be the difference makers. That's why you're elected. And I can promise you, if you don't start doing that, you won't be in those positions for very long, because there are enough people that are starting to get through the thought process. If I can't do something about it, then I'm going to run and make change. And that's exactly what's going to happen. Hey, I applaud you for being on council for forty years. Did you know what? You need to look around this community and see what you've created.
Take a look.
And it isn't pretty.
It isn't pretty.
It's food for the body.
Thank you, Pat.
Patrick, you are eloquent and a man of integrity.
Thank you.
I appreciate that article you wrote for the Daily Five Times. I appreciate your phone.
Is there anybody else that'd like to come up and speak?
Yeah, I'd like to speak, sir.
Please come up, please. Yep.
Thank you. This man just spoke truth to power. When the hell are you all going to do something about it? Anybody have an ask for me?
No, we're here to listen to you, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Tanya, beautiful. Cheryl, as usual. Kelly, thanks for reporting. Rawlins is in deep trouble, and the responsibility lies with you all. Good evening, everybody. Excuse me for my forthrightness. I understand we have to be nice and polite. Patrick, excuse me for being so forward. It's really very simple, just as Mr. Gonzalez told you. Were you listening? It's known as the KISS theory. Keep it simple, stupid. We've all heard that. Everyone has heard that. Alternatively, it's the economy, stupid. Bill Clinton said that. You might even think, "What's wrong with this picture?" Forrest Gump had it right. Stupid is as stupid does. Just saying. You all want that, too. Ben Franklin said, "Those who would surrender freedom for security deserve neither, because they're neither." I got enough freedom, but I'm not going to surrender for security. The security that we experience as citizens here is deplorable. We have police that are killing people. We have police that are chasing women to their residences, and all she's doing is going to change out her ride on the tire, flashing a gun. When are you going to fire Mr. Gamblin? You ready to raise your hand on that one? Oh, I thought you were going to do it. The gentleman's sitting right back here, and I respect our chief of police. I've had civil conversations with Mr. Palmer. It's Mr. Palmer's job, I believe, to take a look at things and understand that Mr. Gonzalez is correct, Ms. Lumen is correct, Bailey is correct. We are correct. You are our service. The police are our service. Mr. Martinez, you yourself, how are you doing, sir?
I'm fine.
Good to see you, sir. You yourself have told me that you were beaten up by two Rawlins Police Department officers years ago. Why don't you share that story with everybody tonight? Would you do that?
I don't think I should.
No, I don't think you should.
I don't think I should.
Because it would be a good idea, but you're too... You're too... You're not courageous enough to bar you. Courage is what it takes. They don't want you back at them in the trenches when the push comes to shove. No. The Marine Corps has a different ethic. Ask my Marine Corps friend right here, Mr. Martinez. He's been in. Those who would surrender freedom for security deserve neither. That's what we have, too much security. Working theory, just in my opinion, of this city is the CUSSS. That would be simple. Corruption under strict supervision. Yeah. I'm speaking truth to power now. Corruption under strict supervision. Y'all will give nothing to address the citizens' concerns. Selective enforcement of the law. I brought this issue to Mr. Palmer before, and he knows exactly what I'm saying, and he's attempted to address it, but it just goes back to normal. When are you going to put your foot down and be equal under the law? You don't know how to do it here. You've got a corrupt city attorney sitting right over there. I've asked her to provide reports to me about an individual who's parked close to a stop sign. Can't be provided. Oh, no. Thanks to social media and hearsay, many people know what sort of place Rawlins is. Many people know by direct experience, and I want them. Especially the law-abiding citizens of this town. I think that's all that's in this room here. It's a place to avoid it. That's right. It's a place not even to stop for gas if you're informed about Rawlins' loyalty. Just blow on through. Gas is cheaper over lard, and it's cheaper over Roxy Green's A. People who can have already voted with their feet and left Rawlins. Young people continue to lead in large numbers. We, the people, are tired of the lies, the deceptions, and the cover-ups. We're tired of it. The blame for the situation rests squarely with the Rawlins City Council. You have the power to hire and fire the city attorney, the chief of police, the municipal court judge, and the city manager. It's shameful what the Rawlins Police Department did to a fine man, Mr. John Rutherford. Shameful. You think people didn't notice that? They noticed it all the way over the shine and the back, probably down in Denver. They're looking at you. Do you really think you cannot avoid examination under microscope? Don't smile at me like that, Mr. Martinez. You know exactly what I'm talking about. You're part of the problem, sir.
You about done?
Yes, sir. One minute. So keep it simple, council members. KISS, keep it simple. Sirs, men. You should ask for and accept the immediate resignations of Mr. Gamblin, Mr. Ballastary, and Mr. Frakes. And you should take that up with the man who knows best what is going on with the police department that most of the citizens have been of this town is out of control. Give properly less. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you very much for your time, and appreciate your time tonight. Only five minutes. I try to be as level-minded as I possibly can. A lot of issues were brought up, a lot of things were brought up, and unfortunately, I'm going to have to echo a few of them. I forgot my phone. And they mentioned some things about the character and the... How they do their jobs here. Unfortunately, Oscar Gamblin has been picked on a lot here, and I'm not going to take away from him or anything else, but I leave that at the responsibility at your all's feet, okay? At your all's desk. What I mean by that is this. I have personally tried to make contact with every one of you, to include Scott and Officer Palmer, twice. I wish, with everything that I have in my next breath, that I could say, "One of yous, one of yous entertained me just for the mere fact of saying, 'Thank you very much for your response.'" Thank you very much. I mean, I did this twice. So I thought maybe I should get examples of other Americans within our country, not in particular Wyoming, for examples for us to follow, to... For us to maybe mimic to our own advantage, okay? But when I don't do that, and I don't even get a courtesy, "Thank you for your time," whatever, how am I supposed to meet any one of my fellow residents here and say, "Know what? They're working at it." I don't have to tell them that all they told me was, "Take a long walk, I'm short." But I can say, "Hey, they recognize me. They seen who I was, not once, but twice, or once or twice." I can't do that with... I can't do that with full energy, you know what I'm saying, conviction. So how am I supposed to expect an officer that I'm supposed to respect out there to think that he has the support of the people that we elect? Yes, we elected, I elected. I'm fully responsible for that also, okay? But whereas we sit here seeing this, how am I supposed to expect any of my police officers? Because that's I-80 out there. We have a lot of people that can come in and out of here. It only takes five minutes to get in here and five minutes to get out. Those officers are always out there doing it. But I, I put that responsibility on you. And you, chief. Because we have a young lady here that asks, "What are we doing?" At least we could've said, "You know what? We're bringing in a duty expert for this area. We're gonna go to the, uh, Carbon County Counseling, or one of our counsellings. We're, we're having a shock." Even if, even if all we're doing is going in there and signing our name and walking out. Not that that would happen, okay? Something to reassure us that that's going to happen. If I can't get that as just a simple resident here, how am I supposed to expect my officers, the people that are out there protecting me and to keep me safe and my family safe and my, and my neighbors safe, to be able to approach any place or anybody when they have an individual that was judged for wrongful, for a wrongful death? How is he supposed to say, "Hey, you know what? I can go to this vehicle, I can go to these people over here, and I can trust that I've got somebody watching my back"? Not one message from you. I can't walk up to that officer and say, "Mr. Gamble," or "Mr.," whatever his name is, okay? You're doing a fine job. You've got the support of your council members here. They're doing what they can. I know them. And, and I, and I try to play it safe, okay? I call it safe. I read that first one, that first night. I sat back there, and then I sent that. Okay? I sent the second one about a week later, just prior, because, like the gentleman said, I was in the Marine Corps. We take training for this kind of stuff. We're only as strong as our weakest link. And right now, unfortunately, it sits right here and right there. Okay? Because those officers depend on each other, just like my Marines depended on each other. When one man's allowed to go astray, just like you hear in, in the news all the time, okay? They don't go to court for wrongful death. They go to court for manslaughter. Okay? There's more in-depth stuff like this I can bring up, but I'm a little bit ill-prepared tonight. I will be sending another email to everybody. And, and I'm not trying to tell you how to do your job. We elected you. We had confidence in you to do something. Something as simple as somebody losing their lives and possibly losing another life. I don't hold Mr. Gamble for Mr. Rutherford's or that young lady's. I hold each one of you accountable. Because that man, as far as I'm concerned, has no confidence as to what's going on when he gets in the uniform and he has to go out there and play, I mean, do his work. Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ray.
Honorable Mayor and council, I guess despite my better judgment, you know, it'd be great to live in a free society where we didn't have to have any ordinances, any rules, and, and we were good neighbors, like the golden rule said to us. But, you know, when people live next door, I'll pass these around if you'd like. These are just some of the things that we don't enforce. These are all enforcement pictures just recently, garbage of we, the citizens, that somebody felt that they didn't like looking at that. But, you know, we're all a free society here, so we should be able just to do this, I guess, according to some of these citizens. But unfortunately, some people call and want us to do something about these, and we do. And there's a lot of before and after pictures here that you can see of the messes before and what was cleaned up afterwards. When we talk about, I'll wait, pass them out later there. When we talk about supporting our police force, I'm gonna go right here on record that I support every one of those people wearing the uniform. Every single day. That they're doing their job. These people went through a criminal process and were found not guilty of a criminal process. Once they went to civil court, that's beyond our control. And that got mitigated down in Cheyenne under a state level, for the people that were paying the bill, not us. Wasn't that we're gonna get scared to be fined civilly wrong? They settled. You watch the news, if you're gonna see, every, and you'll watch this again play out in Casper. And everywhere else, there's been an officer-involved shooting in this country. There's a civil super follows. Guaranteed, every time. But, you know, we, we lose sight of somebody that was a wanted felon, had narcotics in their system. And that's, that's okay. Our, our, our police officers were just out there, you know, killing an innocent man that had a warrant that had illegal narcotics in his system. But our cops are the bad guys. That when they took action in six seconds of time that took this whole incident to play out, six seconds, that we've been scrutinizing for three years. That's what it's like to wear a badge. And we are doing things to prevent this. Before those police officers come back to work, there was a complete review of all policies and procedures of the police department. With some corrections made on a few things, some ideas and suggestions on how to do our job better. Each one of those police officers went under intensive psychological evaluation to see if they were good to come back to work. Because taking a man's life, innocent or not, is not a light thing to do. And so these people went through a medical review, a psychological review, and were cleared. Come back to work. As far as the city's responsibility goes, I don't know why we'd fire somebody for doing their job. At the end of the day, they weren't found criminally guilty of doing anything wrong. There's a difference between criminal and civil. Ask O.J. Simpson about that. I, I just, I would challenge any of these people to contact the chief of police. Go on a ride along. Go with these police officers and see what they deal with. Put yourself in that position that we want our officers to go home at night too, to their families and their citizens of this community also. However, with the advances of social media being what it is today, city employees aren't citizens of this community anymore, at all. They don't have a right to express their opinions, at all. Because anything that they may say is the opinion of the city. They have no personal freedom, just like the seven of you sitting up here that are elected by the citizens. If you choose to make a post on your personal Facebook page, it's a viewpoint of the city. It's not Aaron Durst, it's not Dabari Martinez, it's not Steve Nicholson, or Steve Sanger, or Lewis, or Jackie, or me for that matter. We have no personal freedom to voice our opinion about what we think. Because it's always what the city is, because we're tied with city employees. You know, if, you know, if you think it's okay to release personnel records of people, I'm gonna disagree with you, and so is the Supreme Court on that, on whether we can re-release disciplinary action on any employee. I don't think any of your employers are gonna be releasing disciplinary action at your place of work either because of the laws of the land. Now, if they wanna change that law and let us release those records, we can do it. But until that happens, those disciplinary actions towards people will not be released. Sorry, that's beyond my control. So anyway, I just wanna say that the police department does a lot of great things in this community. You know, if you, when you're not looking at all the negative stuff on social media, you know, go out there and watch police officers playing basketball with kids the other day. Watch them dancing with kids at events after school. Watch them go up to the, go up to Highland Hills Elementary School in the morning and, and take part in the hug-a-cop program when the cops are out there greeting all the kids going to school every morning. You know, we wanna talk about other things. No, I'm not gonna go there. I'm just gonna stop right here. But I, I, I think the, I hope that the employees of this city know that they have my support. And I'm pretty sure they know they have the support of the seven of you city council members. Thank you for your time, mayor and council.
Thank you, Scott. If there's nobody else that wants to come forward, we will move on. Move on to the city council reports. Board of Adjustments, that'll do it myself, and I have nothing new to report there. Moving on down to COG, I have nothing new to report there. We'll move on down to DDA Main Street. Linda Smith and Pam Thayer is gonna speak on her behalf and give us an update.
Um, I'll make this quick, but I, Linda Smith again, on behalf of myself and our Rawlins DDA staff and our board of directors, which we had a board meeting last night. And we wanna put our thoughts and prayers out to Linda Smith's family at this time. So I'm just popped in and decided to do this for her. I just wanted to, first of all, I'll say, Honorable Mayor and council, thank you for your service. Thank you for supporting this program. And I have a lot of great things to say, and a lot of things that I'm saying for our volunteers, for our, for the community, for our sponsors, that we are a place to stop. And so the first thing I wanna let you guys know is this is something new that just, first edition. It's called Downtown Details. This was the idea of a volunteer and a summer intern. And it's our first issue, and we're making some changes, and we're trying to make it the best possible with different categories. But we're moving it forward, and we really just wanna keep the downtown, the community, and yourselves, and everybody informed of what's going on. You know, they, they spearheaded this, the volunteer and the summer intern, and yes, we need to do some tweaks. But one of the biggest things is, we will get this out in the more hands. But one thing, we've let the downtown merchant snow and everybody, if it's involved in the downtown, is we need information back to us so we can create this document. So this is the first of many to come. It'll come out, we're hoping, seasonally. And it just kinda highlights some things going on, so I wanted you guys to make sure you had this. You guys got this? It's dates to remember. A lot of you, I think most of you, will be attending our annual fundraising event. It is September 7th at the Jeffrey Center. And we have a lot of people over the years that are excited to come to Rawlins and come to this. We've had Governor Mead, ooh, Governor Mead, Governor Gordon was here last year. And before that, as his previous position, I think this, this year will be his fourth or fifth ball. We just got the state treasurer, Kurt Meyer, is coming this year. So we have a lot of people coming to the ball. We're really excited. And Sean Curtis and the Divide, if you guys were here last year, he's an awesome band, I think I spoke about him. He's coming, he is in Nashville now, but he's coming back. He was at national rodeo finals, and he is donating a big portion of his time and money. So if you wanna come here, a great band, Sean Curtis will be there for concert. Also, facade celebration. I think the governor is slated to fly in for that also with the Wyoming Business Council, bringing that to a close. And that'll be September 24th. We have been chosen, and you guys had this back in July, to be able to participate. But we wanted to let you guys know that Rawlins, Wyoming was picked between all of Colorado and Wyoming as one of four communities to look at best practices in the downtown. They'll be in Colorado doing Grand B and Steamboat, and then they will be doing Rawlins and Laramie on the 26th. Our portion will be on Thursday morning, so you guys have those times and dates. And then the last thing, this is again, Linda is updating for Linda from our board meeting, is art beat on Fri- Friday, October 4th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. And you guys definitely wanna put that on your calendar. I said, I kinda mentioned that last month when I was here. But you wanna be here on October 4th, because it's gonna be pretty darn exciting what's gonna happen. Can't tell you yet, but you guys will find out. And the community, this is for the community. This is huge for the community, it's huge for the state. Okay, any questions?
Thank you, Pam.
Okay.
All right, now we'll move on to the Rawlins Planning Commission. Councilman Espinoza.
Yes, last planning commission meeting or whatever, we had 11 zone changes, and nine of them were approved. And two of them we had at this last Tuesday's meeting, which only one of them moved ahead as the zone changed, and the second one, we had to table, mainly because we had to try to get ahold of the owner of that property. It was over there right across from the TA, east of the TA, that was supposed to have been a man, a man camp at one time. As for the Tully Park, we finally did the final plat on Tully Park. You guys will be seeing that in a while.
We'll move on down to Urban Systems. Councilman Sanger?
Nothing new to report.
We'll move on down to the Minutes, the approval of the Minutes of August 6th, 2019. Councilman Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the Minutes, yeah, of August 6th, excuse me, 2019.
Councilman Wells, second set. Do we have any questions or comments in regards to that? If not, Mara, would you open online voting?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with five yeas, and Vice Mayor Sanger abstaining.
We'll move on down to Correspondence Reports and Information. Anybody have any questions that they have on reports or responses? We'll move on down to the approval of tonight's agenda. Councilman Wells?
I move to approve the August 20th, 2019 city council agenda as presented.
Second. I have a first and a second. Any questions or comments in regards to that? If not, Mara, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six yeas.
I'll move on down to Unfinished Business. Copy of the ordinance, second reading, amendment, Rawlins Municipal Code Title VIII Health and Safety. This is the second read on this. Anybody have anything they'd like to say or add?
Well, I would. I, I need to make the motion, and then we can discuss it, correct? Okay. So then, I move to table the vote for the second reading for one meeting until the next meeting. Still allow for a public hearing tonight, but our vote would come next meeting, then I will elaborate.
Do you have a second?
For the purpose of discussion, I would second it.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Okay, now do we have any questions or discussions?
So the, the reason that I've made that motion is, there's a lot of, I've got all the notes that I'd like to discuss. There's some of these I think could be quick, pretty quick, you know, yay or nay, vote them up or down kind of things. But there's a few things that I think we need to spend a little bit more time and just really hone in on. For example, we have the, we offer the training to the haulers. The way the ordinance reads is it just says, "We provide four hours of training annually." It doesn't really give any guidelines for that. So the way I read it is, at any point in time, I call the city and say, "I need my training done," because I've got a new employee or whatever. But the impression I kinda got was that we do that training when the landfill goes through the training, and then we just kind of offer it to the haulers. So I would, it's just a matter of, I honestly think 20 or 30 minutes on a few of these things just to, so that when we can say, for example, "We offer training one hour per quarter," or "We offer it annually with the landfill," just something that clarifies what people can expect. And I would just like some more time for us to discuss a few of these things.
Would you like us to do that in a workshop, or?
I think so, yeah. I think it'd just, maybe 20 minutes in the next, 20, 25 minutes in the next workshop. And then that would also still give us a little bit more time in the meeting if we need it, and I think that would wrap it all up.
Councilman Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think the procedure would work, that we can pass it on the second reading. We can have a workshop on the final reading. We could still kill it if we'd like to. But we could listen to your arguments or discussion on the changes that you wanna make. Does that sound?
I would prefer to table it myself, because I, I, I already know that I have a problem with this, so I don't, I'm not gonna vote for it as it's written.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I guess point order on this thing.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I guess point of order on this thing, it wasn't advertised as a public hearing, so in the best interest of public input, it might be a wise move to table this whole second reading for the next meeting, advertise it as a public hearing, take public comment at that time if the council would like to have a work session before. We can do that. We can put this on, I believe we had that date open still, is that the third? Yes. I think we had that date open still on a work session, so we could put this topic on there, go through it again, and have a public hearing, advertise as a public hearing, and then be able to wrap it up and then go to the third, final reading, the second meeting in September. That would just be my recommendation to you.
So we'd have to clean up the motion, then, because I think your motion states to table it, but still have public comment tonight, so we'd need to end that up, to table everything and move everything to the next meeting.
Okay, so procedural question. Do we vote this and then re-motion, or can I change my motion?
If the first and the second will agree to the amendment, you can change your motion.
Okay, so then I would amend this. I move to table second reading until the next meeting, and also to include our public hearing as part of that second reading.
And I would agree to change that motion and agree with your motion as you read it.
Can we modify that to postpone it? That way you don't have to table, take it off the table, and then have another motion.
Oh, okay, so instead of tabling it, postpone the vote, and the rest of the language follows.
You okay with that, Marla?
Sounds great to me.
Okay. You up to speed, Marla?
I do. Got Marla.
And then that, I don't even have any intention to go into any of this tonight. I would save it for the workshop.
Okay. So if there's no other further questions in regards to this, we will open online voting?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six yeas.
Okay. Thank you, Marla. I'll move on to new business. The first item is approval of payroll. Councilman Sanger?
I move to approve payroll register for the pay period of July 21st, 2019 through August 3rd, 2019, in the amount of $231,912.87.
I have a first and a second. Any questions or comments in regards to payroll? If not, Marla, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six yeas.
Okay. We'll move on down to item B, approval of accounts payable. Councilman Espinoza?
Now, Mayor Nicholson, I move to approve the accounts payable register for the period of August 1st, 2019 to August 15th, 2019, in the amount of $769,755.69.
Second. Councilman Wells has a second. Any questions and concern or concerns?
I don't have a question, but in this, the loan payment for the landfill that we paid in full, is that correct?
Which one are you talking about?
Loan payment for the landfill for, thank you, Wes.
Oh, kind of has a print. It's a payable.
Good?
Yes. And we just got the state's portion to pay off.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, Marla, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six yeas.
Next, we'll move on down to executive session. You have a motion? Councilman Sanger?
I move to go into executive session per Wyoming statute 164405, to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law at 8:41.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any questions?
Is there a reason the executive session is on the agenda?
It was updated this morning.
Oh, okay. I just got the one from the back, so.
Any questions? Marla, would you open online voting, please? Right? You don't have a?
No, excuse me. We're done.
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six yeas.
Okay. Thank you. We will move into executive session.